Call the order.
Are you here? Here. Juan Hernandez?
Here.
Stephanie Glanville?
Here.
Berdys Smalling?
Here.
Julio Flores?
Here.
Jane Taylor?
Present.
Eva Liozada?
Here.
Thank you so much. Good evening. As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order the December 18th, 2018 regular meeting to order. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our TV audience. The Board, the Superintendent, and I are pleased that you have come to join us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. The Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personal appointments, and make policy decisions for the district. Excuse me, make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. There are times when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to a time designated for public speaking, excuse me, for public to address the Board. To form and courtesy are important elements in effective meetings. Please silence your cell phones and communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it's legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask periodically for order should noise begin to interfere with our capabilities. I am pleased that you are here to take the time to join us this evening. I'm very proud, excuse me, that we are proud of that school system and we thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Mr. Flores, read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la Junta del 18 de diciembre de 2018. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La Junta y las Superintendentes se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la Junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la Junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de las... Perdón. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la Junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación, y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y le damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. Ms. Taylor?
Good evening. We, as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of Hartford Public Schools. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you, ready to take your information. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Vivian will ring the bell letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now, Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Espanol.
Nosotros... Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la Junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente, y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Le recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, Vivian sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
Thank you. First, we have Maria Hala.
Good evening. My name is Maria Hala, and I'm a teacher at the Environmental Science Magnet School. I've come here in to support a colleague whose character and integrity has come under unjust scrutiny during these last few weeks. That colleague is Ms. Francie Sierra-Ree, who is currently the Assistant Principal at Ranzuli Academy for the Gifted and Talented. I cannot begin to describe to you how much she has done for our school throughout the seven years as she has worked at ESM. During that time, she has worn many different hats which were crucial to the success of our school, and as we know, there are always two sides to a story. Ms. Sierra-Ree is first and foremost an advocate for children. In her 32 years in the Hartford Public Schools, she has put children first and has fought hard to make sure that all children receive an appropriate and individualized education. Her extensive experience ensures that all learners, whether in need of intervention or enrichment, will become lifelong learners. Her development of our Gifted and Talented Protocol at our school has drawn accolades from staff, parents, and students. Ms. Sierra-Ree has always worked closely with parents as she knows that they are the key component to a child's education. Parents at ESM have always known that they can depend upon her for any type of assistance, whether it's related to academic, social, or emotional support. Many parents have expressed their disappointment of losing such a valuable resource, but understand that Ms. Sierra-Ree will continue to competently and proudly serve the Hartford Public Schools. Since Ms. Sierra-Ree has transitioned on, we've been left with a void that has not been filled and most likely will never be filled by one person alone. But change is not always easy to accept. However, we continue to move forward and find positive in the change. We know that the Hartford Public Schools are in a better place with Ms. Sierra-Ree at the helm, and we believe that she deserves to be given a chance to replicate and expand upon what she accomplished at our school. Thank you. Good night.
Kim Hart.
Hi, my name is Kim Hart. I'm a special ed teacher at Mary Hooker School. I get to have come here in support of Francie Sierra-Ree. I have worked with Ms. Sierra-Ree for the past six years. While we have several, had had several leaders since then, Francie has been there consistently supporting the special ed team and staff in a leadership capacity. She has single-handedly developed and managed enrichment clusters. She established our Gifted and Talented procedures and curriculum, all while setting aside additional time for students struggling with behaviors and working with their families to provide individual support. She uses data to drive instruction and to make informed decisions, and she has taught others to do the same. With this knowledge, with this data knowledge, she has run all data team meetings, walkthroughs, provided support for new teachers, coaching for special ed teachers, supported the community through the organization of a dinner for homeless shelter in Hartford, and raising money for an orphanage in Uganda. She was responsible for leading, organizing, and supporting all math and ELA interventions. She has been the consistent face of our school. Her knowledge of our school and faith in our best practices have positively impacted the recruitment of our families. She is supportive, knowledgeable, has compassion of heart, advocates for students and staff, and has many other qualities you would want in a leader. Thank you.
Thank you. Corinne Foran.
Good evening. I have known Ms. Sierra-Ree for seven years. She was my son's, both my children's advisors, coach for Gifted and Talented, and advocate for both of my Tier One kids. She coached teachers in differentiation. She set up programs like Virtual High School, Advanced Classes, and independent projects for my children. She was an advocate for me when dealing with a teacher who was not as supportive, and she will be a definite asset to Ranzuli. Thank you.
Thank you. Doreen Clappas.
Good evening. I'm Doreen Clappas. I'm the family support provider at the Environmental Sciences at Mary Hooker School in Hartford. And I am reading this on behalf of one of our parents. Her name is Sumita Biswas, and she could not be here tonight. So, I'd like to read this. Mrs. Manish would like to tell everyone about her family's experience working with Ms. Sierra-Ree. This summer, we started to explore, last summer, started to explore what our school had to offer for the gifted and talented children at our school, and that is when our principal, Ms. Thompson, invited her to meet Ms. Sierra-Ree. Since that very day, she has made this experience extremely wonderful for us, starting from explaining to us the whole process and how things are done for children like Avni, my daughter. She made the whole process happen and being with us through every single step, coordinating and consulting, she just did everything for us. She spent many hours with Avni, us, and the teachers to make this all work out. We will truly miss her presence at the school, but feel so happy for all the students and families that are fortunate to have her there. Thank you.
Thank you. Natalie Langlais.
Good evening to members of the Board. My name is Natalie Langlais. My son, Nathan Ross, is in school, and he will be returning to Martin Luther King in 2020. I just want to address that and saying that on behalf of parents and the community, we are very pleased that the MLK Project is coming along, and our primary concern is the timeline and us really starting reopening the school on time for 2020. That is the major concern right now. We have seen other construction projects drag on and on and on, and this is not what we want for our MLK school. So, I just want to acknowledge that. We appreciate, you know, the Board's interest and support, and, you know, we're going to vote on that and looking forward to getting yeses all across the Board. Thank you. I also would like to address a matter of PTO and SGCs. And just saying that in going forward as we make or tweak our policies, we be mindful that parent engagement should be at the top, you know, of things that we are considering. Across the district, it has been difficult engaging parents to be involved in PTOs and SGCs. And I think going forward, what we are attempting to achieve should also be boosting parent engagement. Also, should be holding principals and FRAs accountable if we do not have functional PTOs and SGCs. So, instead of tweaking things to say, well, this is okay, I so totally disagree with that. Again, I would like to mention Title I funding. I think just 1% is allocated for parent engagement. I understand there are fiscal challenges, but if we could tweak that, put a little bit more towards parent engagement, maybe the FRA's, the principals, and even other parents like myself could say, well, you know, we have something to motivate you to come out. We have something to, you know, just encourage you. The community we serve is, you know, experience a lot of depravity and, you know, it's tough. It's a not-end community. We all know, we are all out there struggling. So, I just want to ask the Board, as you go forward, tweaking policies or making changes, just be mindful of parent engagement. There are a lot of parents out there who willing to come out, but just circumstances that, you know, personal circumstances make it hard for them. So, I just want to thank you for the work that you're doing going forward, and we going into the Christmas season. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Corinne Foran is on the list again to speak on a different topic. I don't think she took up all her minutes before, so I don't know who's... We don't have a protocol. Yes.
I also wanted to speak on Sean Tominy's behalf. He has attended all the PTO meetings at UHSSC to keep parents up to date as to what was happening with the school. He's built a family atmosphere with the staff and parents and students. He has been amazing with helping my son and I navigate the 504 system and making us feel very supported. The transition from Mr. Folen to Mr. Tominy seemed seamless from a parent's perspective. He's been very committed in giving every student at UHSSC the opportunity for the college experience, and so I would like to put forward that you please support Mr. Tominy in Dr. Torres Rodriguez's nomination for principal.
Thank you. Eliana Sukroff.
Hello. I'm here tonight to talk about Ranzuli, but it's a problem with the district. That's what I want to address tonight. I would also like to mention that Ms. Maria Haley is Ms. Sierra-Ree's sister.
I believe so, right? It's not Haley, it's Hala.
Hala. Okay.
Please address the Board. Please address the Board.
Ms. Hala is Ms. Sierra-Ree's sister, and I would do the same for my sister. I would speak up for her too, so I'm not faulting her. Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, you repeatedly call your plan for our school district a model of excellence. Well, Superintendent and Board of Ed, it is important to recognize when you have achieved excellence and to keep your hands off of it and do not damage it. In three ways, you have damaged the excellence of Ranzuli Academy, and you have damaged our school community. For several years, Ranzuli School has operated at a high level, and our students and parents have been very happy. Our head of school, Freddie DeJesus, was a teacher for six years, and for the past two years, he has acted as our head of school, performing all the duties of an assistant principal, except teacher evaluations in an excellent manner. This is what excellence looks like. I have nothing against the new Assistant Principal, Ms. Sierra-Ree. She helped me get the proper math class for my son, and in my limited contact with her, she has been professional. I just think she is not right for our school. Please place her somewhere else. I do, however, disagree with the district of number one. District violating the State of Connecticut Board of Ed policy, which requires it to consult the Ranzuli SGC when they hire a principal or other school administrators, which refers to head of school. They violated that, and that's not correct. Number two, the district removed sixth-grade teacher, Ms. McGlamry, who also taught all the enrichment classes and ran the library. Let me report to you from the parents, she was doing an excellent job. And she also notified the Board of Ed that on October 22nd, she was approved to be hired permanently. On October 23rd, she spoke out at a meeting with Central Office, and on November 2nd, she was told that they were moving someone else into that position. That is retaliation. Then, they realized that they did not have a certified person to fill her post, and they asked her to come back, which she declined, and I do not blame her. I ask you to root out retaliation from your district, Ms. Supervisor. Number three, there was a very problematic meeting that Ms. Sierra-Ree, Mr. Oliver Barton, and another district member held with a select group of students. It appears Ms. Sierra-Ree was trying to introduce herself to these students. However, I don't agree, I don't disagree with that. That's admirable. What I do find alarming is that a select group of students only were chosen for this conversation. How were they selected?
We're going to have to end it right there. Over your time, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Elizabeth Elrich.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Erlich. I am the Chair of the SGC at the University High School of Science and Engineering, and I'm here to give my full support for making Mr. Tominy the permanent principal of University High School. We are impressed with the leadership he's shown over the past 11 months and his commitment to equity and access for all students at UHSSC. Mr. Tominy has been dedicated to the students of Hartford Public Schools for 19 years and has been a consistent and accessible presence in all the roles he's undertaken for Hartford Public Schools. He has fought for more educational opportunities for all students while advocating for best practices in instruction. Mr. Tominy is dedicated to his students and his teachers and continually goes above and beyond to make sure that every student has what they need to succeed. Mr. Tominy has the full support of the UHSSC SGC, as well as the teachers, parents, and students. I encourage you to vote in favor of the Superintendent's recommendation to appoint Mr. Tominy as the permanent principal of University High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Millie Archiniegas.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent and Board Members. My name is Millie Archiniegas, and I am the Executive Director of the Hartford Parent University. I came today to just kind of clarify a couple of things. You know, I was unable to come to the workshop on December the 4th, and I'm glad you guys had it and opened it to the parents. But there, as I watched the video, and I heard Hartford Parent University being mentioned a couple of times in the video, number one, I... What's in the policy as it being revised, as revised, that is something that Hartford Parent University was not involved in, okay? Just to be clear. We did not see the final outcome of all of the changes before it went into Policy Committee. We were a part of the Family and Community Engagement Committee because we have a grant that we're working on together, which is the Nellie May Education Foundation Grant, and we did provide our feedback as well as it related to that. Because part of the work, in that work, we had to provide technical assistance to schools as it relates to creating a PTO in their school and also a school governance council, and we also provided training. So, that was, that was our partnership in that Family and Community Engagement Committee's work. But there was never, we were never participated in the final outcome of the, of the changes to the school governance council policy before it went to the Policy Committee. That's number one. And then, number two, I think it's important that we know the content of the school governance council legislation, so that we can understand the hard work that PTO leaders at that time went through to pass this legislation statewide, right? So, this was not just affecting Hartford, but it affected all of Connecticut, and that was a huge win for us at that time. And I appreciate Ms. Brody, you saying that in the workshop where you were a part of that effort as well, and I agree that, you know, it would be a step back to say that PTOs may assist rather than in collaboration with the PTO because we put a lot of work and effort in that, in that work. So, that will be going a step backward. The Hartford School Governance Council policy is the strongest policy in the state, and it is that way because we did most of the work. And Chairman, your mother, Ms. Stallings, she agreed with all of us that the PTO will be included in this school governance council legislation so that parents will have a stronger voice in the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Lindstrom.
Good evening. My name is Kevin Lindstrom, and I'm an engineering student at the University of Connecticut and an alumni of University High School of Science Engineering. With my time, I'd like to offer a testament about Mr. Sean Tominy's character. High school is comprised of the four years of the greatest change in a person's life. It is the rite of passage to adulthood. Naturally, with this transition, we want the most qualified of individuals to be nurturing the future leaders of our society. It is the duty of every teacher and administrator to foster an environment that challenges students to be better. And we also need to have an environment that supports them when they undoubtedly fail because learning occurs from a success as well as failure, and learning cannot occur without challenge. Under Mr. Tominy's supervision, University High School has been a place of personal growth and achievement for me and my peers. In my time at the school, I served as the president of my class, vice president of National Honor Society, a student representative on the School Governance Council, and started a debate club. I spent a great deal of time attempting to represent my fellow students and had many interactions with Mr. Tominy. As with any high school student, I had grandiose ideas that were flowing out of my mind, and many of which were unreachable. When I went to obtain approval for Mr. Tominy, I always received an honest, genuine response. He would attentively listen to my proposal and would always support new ideas to the best of his ability. If I suggested something unreasonable, I would receive a thorough explanation. It was because of these interactions that I learned how to negotiate and compromise. After remending the proposals, most of them went through because I was able to construct them from a new perspective. I was given the tools to make sure that I was able to serve everyone and help foster the rigorous educational environment that the school provided. But perspective isn't unilateral. A school's administration must always consider the experiences of the students it serves. And Mr. Tominy has been one of the most empathetic and genuine administrators I've had for all of my education. He interacts with students every day and never feels too important to listen. He has consistently and always supported positive change. He's one of the driving forces for the creation of a school activity block for a half hour every morning. During this block, students may utilize the network of teachers and peers to receive help or enlarge their minds by participating in clubs. He listens to students, and when we ask for the inclusion of shorts in the school uniform, he always championed, he supported that. He always championed dialogues that he can serve his community more effectively. Mr. Tominy is a man who truly believes in the power of magnet schools. The fact that he sends to his kids to University High School illustrates the power of his belief in the power of diversity and perspective. He does not simply speak of serving this community. He wakes up every morning and is motivated to educate and prove and inspire. We all know the adage, "Actions speak louder than words," and hopefully my testament to the actions of Mr. Sean Tominy will enumerate his motivation and passion for serving the next generation of this nation. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Downs. Michael Downs.
Evening, Board Members. Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford. First thing I'd like to say is I'm glad to see the shovels are on the ground at Martin Luther King School. Looks good. I also read in this morning's paper about the absentee issue in the Hartford Public Schools. I thought that the absentee issue had improved, but it looks like 25% of the students are chronically absent. And of course, the state's gonna give us some money to improve it, so I suppose we should accept the money. Also, I noticed that Great Path's contract with Manchester Community College runs out the end of this school year, so I expect that they will return to Hartford in the fall. And my only question now is, when do the pathways to technology students gonna return to Hartford? And we aren't paying for a school in East Hartford, not Hartford. There's plenty of open buildings in Hartford. Since we've closed some schools, we still own those buildings. We could use them. And my last issue is fairness and discipline for substitute teachers. As President of the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers, I'm concerned about this. Substitute teachers have no retirement benefits. There's no pension, no health benefits for retired substitute teachers. If someone's forced out, they have nothing, no recourse, except possibly a lawsuit. And my main concern, of course, is with substitute teachers that have been in the system for over 30 years. And certainly, it's unfair to force them out without something. Thank you.
Thank you. Jasmine Davis.
Hello, how you guys doing? As you know, my name is Jasmine Davis, and I am here in full support of my future principal of the UHSSC. First, I'm gonna start off by saying that my four children have gone to UHSSC and have worked well and have gotten to know Mr. Tominy. He has always been approachable and fair with my boys and all the students. As a Hartford parent, I am grateful for his leadership, and I am hope to see him in this position permanently. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevan Llewellyn.
Good evening. I'm a student at UHSSC, and the relationship I have with Tominy is more than just a principal-to-student relationship. I feel like it's been a long journey. He's seen me mature from a young naive man into a young mature man. And everybody might not be on his good side, but, I mean, he's Irish. Feel me? But Tominy, I feel like, even if you're not on his good side, he will want to see you succeed. He will always be there for you, even if, I don't know if something's wrong with you, but he will always be there. For me personally, I feel like Tominy, he gives me determination to succeed. And I feel like if he was gone, I wouldn't have that determination, that courage, to succeed and be the engineer that I want to be. At school, when something's wrong with my progress, he comes to me, he'll tell me, oh, what's wrong? Why do you have a D? Why do you have an F? And I'll be like, oh, sorry, I didn't even know. But he comes to me and makes me feel like I need to succeed. And nothing would be more happy than me walking across that stage, just shake his hand, and come back one day and be like, hey, Tominy, you were there for me. And, feel me, I appreciate that relationship more than anything. And it's more than just going to school every day and seeing him and going home. Is, I go to school and I feel like I'm at home. I leave home to go to home and see a lot of family, and I feel at home, and I do my work, and I try to do the best of my ability. So, thank you.
Thank you. Andrew Clark.
Good evening. How are you? How many minutes do I have again? Two. Right. Three, okay. Two was the last time, right?
But you're gonna hear the bell, I think, like that, two.
Okay. And just for clarification, is there anywhere to submit this? Like, do you have these online, too? Do you scan them? Yeah? Okay, thank you. I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of a number of SGC members and chairs within Hartford Public Schools. I'm Andrew Clark, former Chair of the Annie Fisher SGC. On December 13th of this year, the State Department of Ed, through its Chief Operating Officer, Charlene Russell Tucker, sent a memo to all superintendents of schools. Subject line read, "Family Engagement: Definition and Framework." The beginning paragraph reads, "The Connecticut State Department of Education, the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood, and the Connecticut Early Childhood Funders collaborated, joined with the Commissioners Roundtable for Family and Community Engagement in Education, parents, educators, and community members to co-create a common definition for advancing family engagement efforts across the state. The message from all stakeholders was increasingly clear and consistent. Family engagement is a full, equal, and equitable partnership among families, educators, and community partners to promote children's learning and development from birth through college and career." Why did this group get together? In the companion website to this memo entitled, this is on the State Department of Education site, entitled "Full, Equal, and Equitable Partnerships with Families," the introductory statement indicates the impetus for this work. It states, "Every federal and state program that concerns children from early childhood, elementary, secondary, and community education to health, juvenile justice, and welfare has policy and guidelines and requirements about reaching out to and communicating with families. Yet no clear and consistent definition of what that means or even what it is called has emerged. So the purpose of this common definition and framework of family engagement is to encourage shared understanding and collaboration, the hope that it will lead to a robust culture of partnership between families and professionals throughout all education and human service programs." Why is this essential? Federal law. Title I, Every Student Succeeds Act 2016. Every school district that receives federal Title I funds shall develop jointly with and agree on with and distribute to parents and family members participating children a written parent and family engagement policy. It shall be incorporated into the district's plan and establish agency expectations, et cetera." Federal law. Which leads us to why we write to you tonight. "Full, equitable partners, meaningful parent and family involvement." These are all key words that members of Hartford Public School SGCs feel do not align with our experience with the district's process to refine the current BOE SGC policy document. There is no clearer indication of the value of family and community engagement as equal, equitable, and full partners in our children's education than how this SGC redline document come about." Is that it? One more minute? Or is that it? That's it? Okay. So, just to sum up, there's no hiding the fact that there's a chasm between SGCs and the BOE and the district. Within this process led by the-
Clark, you can just submit that. I don't know how many other speakers we had, but that was the three? That was the three minutes?
Okay.
You can submit that, we appreciate it.
Well, thank you very much, I will.
But I'm interested to read it, so please. Okay.
Thank you. Alfredo Cardona.
How you doing, guys? This is my son Isaac, and one of his best friends Gianni, both members of the basketball team at University High School. I happen to coach there. My son Isaac is on pace to graduate with his class in 2019. He is on pace. Two years ago, that was an absolute lie. He came woefully unprepared from the middle school he was in. I felt like he was passed along. He had some struggles in math and science, and he went to one of the most difficult schools in the district. University is a high achievement school, it is an honor school. But I wanted him there, because I wanted him to face the challenge. I wasn't prepared for how he was gonna handle it. It was really unfair of me to put that burden on him. So for two years, we struggled. He wasted two years, because, you know, he earned maybe a half year of credits. He was resentful, he was upset, he was sad, he wanted to transfer. Because of his inability to succeed in a class at the very beginning, he had bad relationships with the teachers. You know, he couldn't internalize what was happening to him. But throughout that whole process, the one constant was Mr. Tominy. See, when I leave my son in a school for seven hours a day, five days a week, I'm not just entrusting him as a student. Mr. Tominy becomes my son's father. He becomes another parent. If I'm leaving my son at the school there for 35 hours a week, I'm entrusting you with my son. Their relationship goes beyond principal-student, because they talked about things that mattered to him. They talked about life. He was genuinely interested in who he was gonna become and how he can help him improve as an individual student. Without Mr. Tominy, I don't know where he would be at academically. I do not know where he would be at maturity-wise. I did all I could as a parent, but I needed help. And that help came in the support of Mr. Tominy and the administration. You know, when he was just, when he was just the vice principal, he was actually the relationship manager. You know, Mr. Foden did all the nitty-gritty that had to be done, but Mr. Tominy was the relationship manager. Now that he's taken on the responsibility that a principal has, he's still the relationship manager. And I'm only speaking as a parent, because in my personal experience, without his support and dedication, we may be talking about a different story instead of saying, "In 2019, my son will graduate." Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. We have been experiencing some technical difficulties this evening. Normally, we would have, each member would have a laptop in front of them, but we had some Wi-Fi issues, so we're going to go old-school with our agenda, back to a paper agenda. The reason why I bring that up is because we, as a board, decided that we were going to skip reports, because they're online, in an effort to try to save time and get you guys in and out of the meeting, and not keep here. So what we're going to do is, we have submitted our committee reports online, and you're welcome to read them there. I'm going to do a small chairman's report, because the superintendent has a lot to report on. And I simply am going to just acknowledge, I'll start by acknowledging the City Council yesterday for accepting the ECS funds, which are, it's a good thing, because it helps us pay our bills. The ECS money comes from the state, and the cities have passed through, so they went ahead and accepted those funds yesterday. So I appreciate that. MLK, Weaver, Hyde, the construction project is on time, is on schedule. All of the alternates have been approved, so that means that the tennis courts, the softball field, and all the rest of those things will be included in the new project, which is Phase Four. The grass will come last because of all the construction. So while the football field's gonna look nice, pristine, and while the fieldhouse is being constructed, the softball fields will look as if they're abandoned, but they're not. They're going to actually be done last, so those particular fixtures will be done last. But I'm pleased the report is on time and on schedule and under budget, or on budget. MLK, as Mr. Downs, or I refer to him, sorry, Mr. Downs referred to, the MLK project, shovels are in the ground. The fence is being installed around the school. So the demolition phase of that project will begin shortly. We're happy about that, and right now, that should be on time. You know what? In fact, I need to backtrack. The Weaver project has had some delays, but we are going to commit to, I guess, doing work on the weekend and doing some overtime to get that project back on time and on track. And the MLK project, there has been some overtime approved. So if we do run into some issues, there will be some overtime done. So there will be work at night and on weekend to make sure that that project is on time and meets schedule. So I just wanted to do that. This week, Hamilton is open in the city, and Mr. Flores was gracious enough to spend time with the students. I was scheduled to attend, had some issues, so forgive me for that. But I just wanted to acknowledge that we did have a board member there who enjoyed the students and participated with all of the workshops that day. And I just wanted to also acknowledge that I was supposed to go and did not, so forgive me for that. And then lastly, we had the Spirit of Doc, Doc Hurley Classic, took place at Trinity. And there's an exciting rivalry brewing again with Hartford-Hi and Weaver. I think that was a one to two-point game. It was pretty exciting, Hartford-Hi won. And so we look forward to seeing more of our students competing with one another and being in that space. It was very positive. A lot of friends and family there rooting for their children. And so hopefully, we can do more of that. And I'm gonna stop there. So that's the chairman's report, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Stallings. Good evening, everyone. So yes, please do bear with me, there is a lengthy report. And I actually will have someone come and speak and give information as part of my report as well. I will begin with just highlighting to the board that the report will be available to you. And the report has a different structure. It is structured by each of our priority areas. And so the content that I report will be aligned to each of our priorities. I will begin with our priority of teaching and learning. Thus far, we have had 34 school progress reviews that have been conducted in our schools. As defined by Hartford Public Schools, school progress reviews is a process in which principals and their leadership teams work collaboratively with central office administrators to establish indicators for continuous improvement via school improvement plans. They collect implementation data and show progress toward those indicators. And then connect regularly to analyze and discuss the short-term successes and also address the challenges. The goal is to conduct these at least twice a year with the schools. There have been several questions around paraeducator support, and I wanted to offer additional clarification that the need for paraeducator support is a planning and placement team decision. The type of support is given when the data show that a student needs either individualized support for all or part of the school day, to implement support with independent functioning, enhance peer relations, increase opportunities for academic and social learning, and/or to ensure personal safety. Currently, the status of paraeducator support at Hartford Public Schools includes, on staff currently, 353 paraeducators. Pending hires are a total of five, and we have 11 vacancies. Want to add a new opportunity that has presented to us, the Holmes Master Program. It is offered through the American Association of Colleges for Teacher Education, and it is aimed at diversifying the education field to better reflect K-12 demographics, improve the quality of instruction, and establish an environment of mentorship and support. CCSU, as well as ECSU students, have enrolled in the Master Holmes Program. And we have established a partnership with these two higher ed institutions so that we can explore how to expand the program to develop a Holmes Cadets Program, which will support high school students from historically underrepresented groups interested in careers of teaching and school administration. With regard to the family and community partnership priority, a few reports here. One is, as you may be aware, we did have a chronic absenteeism press conference yesterday to highlight, one, the concern that we have around chronic absenteeism, specifically the fact that our preschool, kindergarten data show that 30- the fact that our preschool-kindergarten data show that 30% of our students at the lower, at those lower grades are chronically absent, as well as on the other end of the continuum, our high school students. And so clearly, it is going to require a collaborative effort, not only internally but externally with our community as well. I want to report on the Boundless Project, which is a collaborative partnership between us and the Hartford Public Library to serve the library and intervention needs of our students and families through a system of relevant resources, programming, and services. Operationally, Boundless has expanded with the development of the Boundless Library at Rossin, and the anticipated opening for the Boundless Library at Rossin is going to be next month in January. Some highlights of this partnership. It will be the first Boundless Library at Rossin, which will serve not only students but families during the school and after the school day. Currently, we have distributed Boundless Library cards over, let's see, seven of our schools, and we will continue to distribute the libraries. The idea is for all of our students to be able to have access. The program provides support services for students and families, again, who are looking to improve not only in their reading but also other academic areas. We had the family learning sessions with Hartford Parent University in which myself, Chief Financial Officer David Flage, and a representative from the Connecticut School Finance Project co-facilitated a session last Saturday around understanding Connecticut school finance and our own budget development process. The parents not only learned about the budget and the current, the 1920 budget, also provided us feedback around that new budget model. I know that HPU had other facilitated sessions, but those also included voting and the election process, as well as understanding the student support services continuum. Last update in the family and community engagement section, Boys and Girls Club. I, along with Sam Gray, who is here joining us tonight, have had several conversations for quite some time now. I'll give the context, and then I'll ask Sam to kind of expand on the potential partnership that is in front of us. Over a year, about a year and a half ago, when we first started talking about redesigning the district and engaging our community around what our school should look like, sound like, and feel like, Sam Gray, President and CEO of the Boys and Girls Club, did reach out to me and spoke about opportunities and potential collaboration in the future. At that time, Sam and his board, I believe, were considering a campaign to identify a new, a new club. And Sam was very forthcoming in saying that he wanted to collaborate with the district, but at that point, we, the district, were not ready to talk about what the district model of excellence would be. We hadn't done the engagement, which was going to be informed by the community. Fast forward, we have a district model of excellence. We know that we have our pathways. We know that we have to be intentional around the creation of our middle school standalone neighborhood middle schools, and the fact that we need to have strategic partnerships. And so Sam is here tonight to talk about where Boys and Girls Club, he and his board are with regard to their capital campaign and the opportunity that is in front of us for a new club behind Burr School. I know that we have had conversations with Principal Martin at Burr. We've had conversations with PTO, with the SGC, and with staff. And so I asked Sam for you to come and just give a brief overview of the opportunity that's in front of us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I'm excited. I'm excited for our kids and the opportunity to partner with Hartford Public Schools. So it was about a year ago where I did approach the superintendent about a possible partnership that's aligned with your strategic plan. We're in the business of kids after school, and it's a natural fit for us to do that. We are also an organization that's been in existence since 1860. We're the founding organization for Boys and Girls Clubs, and it all started here in the city of Hartford. And so we're proud of our history and legacy of serving young people in our city. With that being said, I also had the opportunity to reflect on the Equity 2020 Plan a couple of years ago. So what was intriguing for me was really looking at the data, where the kids are, right? So when I looked at the data by zone, what was intriguing for us, and as I mapped Boys and Girls Clubs and other youth-serving organizations, what we realized as an organization, the Boys and Girls Club, is most of our Boys and Girls Clubs are on the west side of Hartford. So essentially, the Boys and Girls Clubs are the west side of Hartford. And what we saw was some real gaps in the service in regards to the northeast and the southeast. So when we peel back those layers in regards to both of those two zones, Zone Two and Four, we realized that there was a large contingency of youth-serving organizations in the northeast. We don't want to duplicate. We're in a spirit of partnership. We want to be where kids really need us the most, and we realize the need is great throughout our city. But we also realized, when we started to map out the south end of town, we realized that there was no building-centered after-school facility in the south end. So we started to explore the south end in regards to, we engaged the city of Hartford in regards to ideal properties that would be suitable. What was interesting, when you look at in the south end, if you look at our city altogether, the real estate, non-taxable space that is environmentally free, and our requirement was at least two and a half acres of land. It's not much of that in the city of Hartford. What we realized is that, we looked at a couple of spaces in regards to Colt Park. The Colt Park was very intriguing to us, but we realized that there's a historical designation, and then also the Department of Public Works also houses their headquarters there as well, and there are some environmental issues. So there's a huge obstacle for us. We have a relationship with Archdiocese, and so as St. Augustine, as well as St. Luke's are both closed, we looked at both of those properties. We realized St. Augustine was not attractive to us because of our close proximity to Trinity College, and we have a location there on the campus. What was intriguing was St. Luke's, and we looked at that relationship and actually saw the proximity of Neiller School. We also recognized that it was, met our requirements in regards to the space and environmentally free. So we signed a lot of intent, but at the same time, we, I engaged the superintendent about Burr School. And Burr School, why Burr School? Because when you look at the south end and you look at the map, right in the middle of the south end is Burr School. So we did look at, the space behind is a possible location. I had the opportunity to meet with the principal, and the principal is here tonight, and her team and her parents in regards to this opportunity. So the question is, and the superintendent made it very clear, there's no money, Sam. What we're saying as an organization, we want to be where kids are, and we've done that for 160 years. And so for us, strategically with the superintendent and in regards to this strategic plan, we want to be a good partner, and we see that this is a way that we can be aligned to provide resources to build a new 35,000 to 40,000 square foot facility behind Burr School. We're excited about this. So where are we in the capital campaign? Our capital campaign is a $20 million campaign. It's been announced right now, the CEO of the Hartford, Chris Swift, is our campaign chair. To date, we've raised publicly $12 million. Our goal is $20 million. $14 million would go towards the actual facility. $3 million would go to the first six years of annual operating expenses, and the remaining $3 million would go to our endowment to make sure that this is a long-lasting legacy for young people and students for years to come. So with that being said, I have provided Vivian with handouts to give you more details in regards to our case for support, the actual location, as well as the actual site where it can actually fit on Burr School, and any other questions that you may have. I try to be very detailed in regards to alignment with the district and your future endeavors in regards to your strategic plan, and we're very, very excited about this opportunity. I've also included my contact information in this packet as well, should you have any questions of me. But again, I thank you, Ms. Superintendent, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak tonight.
Moving on with the rest of my report. With regard to the operational effectiveness priority, I do have a few updates there, and I know that this might have been referenced in our finance committee. The transportation requests for proposals, the plan is to have three RFPs, Request for Proposals. We, in collaboration with the city procurement, reviewed the previous RFP process, and it was decided to create three requests, regular ed, special ed, and athletics, and extracurricular. Athletics and extracurricular activities such as field trips were not included before and will be included as a separate RFP now, given that expenses in securing transportation for such events have been challenging for schools. So the RFPs, of course, as you know, will be posted, allowing for not only local but out-of-state companies to bid as well. Facilities update, the relocation and burns improvement projects. Resolutions have been approved by the city council and Hartford Board of Ed, allowing me to apply for state construction reimbursement grants, and the draft of the application has begun, and there is an RFP for a program manager out there. Travelers Data Mainframe Initiative, as a result of our ongoing partnership and conversations with Travelers, they have extended as in-kind support their experts, about 20 of them, in data analytics, IT infrastructure, and information science to help us create what we're calling a data warehouse that will meet the needs of our schools. Our principals continue to express frustration to us about the amount of data platforms that they have to navigate back and forth, and so our hope is that the experts at Travelers can help us kind of pull all those platforms together. Assistance for homeless children and youth, as authorized by the Federal Hurricane Relief Act, the Hartford Public Schools recently received financial assistance for the homeless children and the youth that were displaced by Harvey, Irma, or Maria hurricanes. Hartford Public School has 313 currently homeless students, and we were awarded $365 per pupil in assistance for those students, a total of $114,000. And as you, if you recall, the number, the figure was still short in terms of the amount that we invested in supporting the students that were displaced by the hurricanes. A notice, an update with athletics, I will not go into all of the updates that I have here. You will see pictures and the details of the updates, but I do want to highlight that the swimming pool at Hartford Public High School, we are fin, well, not we, but students are finally swimming in the pool. The last time that anyone swam was December of 2016, so brings back memories to when I was a student swimming in the pool. I'm going to do my last part of the report. It is a PowerPoint. You all have copies of the PowerPoint, and I wanted to just give a brief update. You'll obviously take this with you and review it, and then, of course, any questions for us that you have, we'll answer those. So, you know, a year, about a year ago, we were, I was providing to you recommendations for the district model of excellence, and so wanted to highlight specifics as to where we are with regard to most of it, the technical elements, the shifts that are moving, the shifts that are happening, and a few programmatic changes. As you know, the district model of excellence is our plan, but it is also a living document, and so I wanted to highlight a few changes there as well. So the first page here speaks to our first year of transition. As you know, currently, this is year two of a three-year process, and so the first page there documents transition events as well as implementation as of this month and where I'm not going to go into all of these, but the next page. Because I'm thorough? I do want to highlight on page two, where you see JMA and High School Inc. there. You all will need to formally vote on the consolidation for the two schools into the New Weaver High School. As you know, in order for us to go to one school code, per policy, it will require that the schools close, and so while we're not closing, I do want to clarify that, we are not closing the doors on, the program doors on JMA and High School Inc., we are going to remove those separate codes and have one code for Weaver, and so it will require, per policy, that we have a hearing for both of those schools. So I wanted to highlight that. And with regard to Hartford Public... Oh, I'm not in the wrong place. Say again? Oh, one more. Okay, last one. I'm going to Hartford High now. So the Hartford High, the Hartford Public High School academies will also require a formal vote to pull all of the academies currently under one school code. We have three codes there, and we've had conversation as to how challenging that is for reporting, budgeting purposes, not only for us but also, you know, it's conversations that we've had with the State Department of Education. And so the same thing here as well. We are not closing, I repeat, we are not closing the doors on the academies. We are going to go to one school code with the academies under one school code at Hartford Public High School, but it will require, again, per policy, that we engage the community and have the hearings for those schools. With regard to the next page where it says MD Fox, as you recall, MD Fox was scheduled to be the dual-language school in reviewing the data, and in terms of considering the readiness from a staff perspective as well, Asian Studies will be the dual-language school, and so it will, Asian Studies is in the next page, but it does, you know, there are implications for Burr because, for MD Fox, because that was the initial school. And so when you go to the next page, know that Asian Studies will require a name change. Say again? I'll speak to dual-language in a minute, and I know that Dr. Negron is here in case we have questions for her. With regard to Renzulli here, we know that Renzulli has a relocation to either Classical or Capital Prep. You know, that is conversations that will continue to happen in the design teams, along with all the other schools that have middle school programs. The co-location, the relocation to another school will allow for a more robust enrollment at Renzulli. As you all remember, the enrollment that was projected for this year was 180 students. That is not the enrollment now, but we certainly want to be able to get to that enrollment, and we also want to expand access across the district by embedding gifted and talented opportunities within other schools in our district. I will take a brief moment to just speak about dual-language. I will take a brief moment to just speak about dual-language as well. The dual-language, when we look at the Asian Studies and the readiness, the staff there has been doing a lot of work getting ready in terms of certification. And, you know, the families and the staff at Asian Studies have requested that they be the first site of a dual-language program. And so as we look at the readiness, Asian Studies currently has four EL support teachers, four teachers in the pipeline for dual-language training and preparation, and four teachers currently working on T-SOL certification. They also have one bilingual transitional standalone classroom. This will not take place until the year 2020, but the school has begun doing a lot of the research and program development for that programmatic implementation. One other reference that I wanted to make on the last page, as you know, this is the one-pager of our district model of excellence, and I think there was a question, I believe it was from Board Member Clark, around the major goal, which initially read for the family and community partnerships, that every school will become a community school. And while we are committed to having that be the case, we did change the goal to increase the number of community schools in each zone. We found that when we were engaging our community around every school becoming a community school, there was a defined idea that people had around what a community school is, which is our current framework. Everyone has the, had the assumption that it was wraparound supports during the school day and after-school day, and clearly that is not a financially sustainable model. And so the wording did change to increase the number of community schools in each zone. By next month, you will all have an opportunity to see and respond to the new framework, the new community school framework, which is a tiered framework and does have elements of community schools at all levels. And so there's more to come there, but I also wanted to highlight, because it was a question that was raised before. Lastly, I wanted to do just a plus delta as to where we are in terms of the district model of excellence. The pluses, we try to do intentional outreach with the families that are transitioning, either with the school closures or co-locations. There are, we do have the middle school and the high school design teams that have been doing their work on a regular basis. As a matter of fact, I know the Weaver team meets before every board meeting. They were here tonight. And lastly, you know, the DME implementation actions are on time. I know that Vice Chair Glanville, this is something that you've, you know, and others on the board have expressed concern about, you know, the construction timelines and funding being, you know, capital improvement planning funding being assigned. And I am happy to report that we are, we are on track with construction and to open the schools on time. In terms of the deltas, the areas that we think we need to either do better or that are challenging for us, you know, the ongoing fiscal constraints. We know that, you know, the district model of excellence is, you know, there's a lot of improvement areas for us, and so we also know that we have a challenging financial situation. We know that right now, we're looking at a $12 million deficit, for those of you that have joined us in our community budget conversations. The good news is that we are not at a $24, $25 million deficit, which is where we have been in the last two years. So we've cut that in half. Nonetheless, we still have a $12 million deficit that we have to think through for next school year while trying to implement the district model of excellence. Another challenge there is the competing demands that we have with the transitioning and then the strategic programming. You know, we are on two trains, if you will. One, with regard to the physical changes of the schools, the closures, relocations, reconfigurations, and then the actual program improvements that we want to make. And lastly, limited human capacity, human capital to meet the needs and the demands. You know that we have reduced staff in the last two years, and there's a lot, that's happening, a lot of work that we're trying to lift. And so we struggle with, you know, keeping the pace. And I know that I get feedback from my team a lot on how fast I and we tend to move. So it's something that we're keeping in the forefront as we move forward. So again, just wanted to give you an update as to where we were with all of the shifts and moves and programmatic changes for the district model of excellence. I do wish you a happy and a safe and healthy holiday season, and I thank you for all the hard work that you do, not just, you know, the board, but, you know, everyone that is here tonight, our staff, and our community and our families. Best wishes to you and your loved ones during the holiday and in the new year. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. All right. So moving on to our business agenda, we are going to enter into an executive session really quickly. And so the first item on our agenda is executive session, is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of going to an executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. We're going to invite the superintendent, Julie Wild, our attorney, and Monica Quinones, and Sean Tanami. They'll be standing in executive session.
Hello, I am your proud superintendent, Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez. I am leading the crucial process of reimagining and restructuring our school district. I need you, all of you, to be significant partners in our process. We are doing this imperative work to deliver on our commitment to ensure improved student outcomes and equitable access to resources for each and every one of our beautiful and capable students. When we have completed this process together, we will hold in our hands a stronger, more equitable school district designed to serve all students well, a plan built by the entire community that will benefit the entire community. We at Hartford Public Schools are coordinating the process, but you, the community, families, students, teachers, and all of our stakeholders are the voices and the minds that must inform this work. By sharing your thoughts, you will help to co-create our district model. Our work together, which takes place over the coming months in community meetings with families, partners, and schools, will culminate in the presentation of recommendations for district models for excellence, different ways in which the district can be reimagined while ensuring the health and viability of our neighborhoods and continuing to provide access to opportunities and services for our families and students. For news about meetings and ongoing updates on our process, please visit our district website at www.hartfordschools.org.
Is there a motion to come out of executive session? It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of coming out of executive session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes, all opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. We are now out of executive session, and we are going to pick up on the business agenda 4.1. Nope, take that back, 4.3, which is a principal appointment. Madam Superintendent.
I'm going to ask that Avila come forward with Monica. Ms. Quinones has served the district for 18 years as an elementary teacher, math coach, resident principal at Noah Webster, director of English Language Learner Services, and principal at Batchelder, and presently acting principal at Naylor. She has managed several grants for the district and supervised district and school-level coaches. She has been intentional in the last two years in her leadership role at Naylor in not only establishing a culture of high expectations for students, but also for the adults. Ms. Avila, if anything that you have to offer?
Good evening, Dr. Torres Rodriguez and board members. Ms. Quinones began her career in education as a second-grade bilingual teacher at Ramon E. Betanza School, and later taught grades three to six as a language transition support teacher. After several years of teaching in the classroom, Ms. Quinones moved into the role as a math coach. This position allowed her to serve different schools across the district. The Hartford Public School Travelers Leadership Academy enabled Ms. Quinones to participate in a resident principal program, which prepared aspiring leaders to take on the challenges of leadership in urban schools. She served as a resident principal at Noah Webster Magnet School and was then selected to be principal of Batchelder School. A few years later, Ms. Quinones was selected to be the director of English Language Learners. As the director of the English Language Learners, sorry, Ms. Quinones oversaw 3,800 Ls in the Hartford Public Schools. Most recently, Ms. Quinones joined the Naylor School community as acting principal. During this time, her commitment to students and her lens on achievement has been evident through her work in the support of the district model of excellence. Third-grade proficiency literacy scores have increased from 16% to 43%. Ms. Quinones advocated successfully hired a family resource aid to support the area of chronic absenteeism. Since then, the rate of absenteeism has decreased significantly from 22.4 to 12.4. This effort is directly aligned with our major goal, school culture and climate. Valuing the importance of family and community, Ms. Quinones partnered with the YMCA to provide after-school activities. This year, the partnership extended to the YWCA to empower our beautiful and capable girls, which will one day become our future leaders. Ms. Quinones has effectively aligned resources to student achievement and the efforts to strive for operational effectiveness. Every decision Ms. Quinones makes is based on what will support our students' academic and social-emotional needs. Ms. Quinones' ultimate goal is to give our students every opportunity possible to achieve their potential and beyond.
Aaron Dunn, all in favor of, no, excuse me, I'm telling you, thank you. Is there a motion to approve this recommendation?
Still moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving this appointment, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes carry, the motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Quinones. There's a thousand questions. Sure, if you'd like to address your school community or say any words, please.
First, I'd like to say good evening to all superintendent and also board members. I'd like to thank you for giving me this opportunity, because every year I've been in Hartford has been just a blessing, I got to say, and I've enjoyed in every position that I've had to be here and be able to share with our students, and I look forward to continuing that and doing everything that I can possible to make that happen by working with the superintendent, with the board, and everyone at Central Office to make that happen. So I thank you so much for this opportunity.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay. The second appointment recommendation is Sean Tomani, principal, University of Hartford, University High School of Science and Engineering. Madam Superintendent.
Yes, Mr. Tomani started his career as a history teacher at Weaver High School 20 years ago. He has also served as a department head and administrator at Buckley Classical and, most recently, University High. He brings talent in operational effectiveness, including scheduling and in building teacher capacity through feedback and professional development. Mr. Tomani has been starting to do work around cultivating equity in our classrooms and in instruction, and it is the expectation that moving forward, he built his own capacity around instructional leadership to lead equitable classrooms in order to build capacity in his staff and in the entire University High community around equity and access for all of our students. Ms. Avila.
Mr. Tomani has been an educator with the Hartford Public Schools since 1998. He was hired as a social studies teacher at Weaver High School. During his first five years teaching at Weaver, he also served as a yearbook advisor, department chair, and builder of the student schedule. In 2003, he completed his master's degree in education at UConn and also transferred to Buckley High School in the Social Studies Department. He became active in the school immediately, taking on the role of department chair, co-leader of freshman academy, co-director of the Saturday Credit Recovery Program, coordinator of the UConn-Nigak Partnership, and also continued to schedule for Buckley and became a part of the district scheduling team. Mr. Tomani completed his administrative certification as part of the Hartford cohort at Central Connecticut State University in 2008. In that same year, he took an opportunity at Classical Magnet School to become the assistant principal. In 2011, he became the assistant principal of University High School of Science and Engineering, where he continued working at building the scheduling and was tasked with overseeing student behavior. He developed his skills in instruction and leadership, holding students to high standards and engaging them in rigorous work. At university, he is known for advocating and promoting his staff and promoting career in college and career readiness.
Are there any comments, questions you want to make? If not, I'm just going to...
I'll say, I'm going to say something real quick. So I just wanted to, you know, we had a good conversation before this, and we expressed some concerns, obviously, but I just want to let you know that the reason that I'm going to be voting yes is because of the two gentlemen that spoke on your behalf specifically. But let me be clear before we, you know, you guys get to clapping, you know, there are some concerns that we have as a board, absolutely, right? And I'm even like nervous about this, like I'm over here with my heart beating. So for me, it was the father and then the gentleman, I don't know if he's still here. If it wasn't for them, right, I would have had some more concerns. I think that if they came up for some reason, they came up because they trust you, they depended on you, and I think you got them to a point where they feel much more comfortable in themselves as young men specifically, right? So I'm going to be keeping an eye out specifically, right? I'm going, I'm on campus, not that I'm not going to visit you, I definitely wouldn't do that, that's not my job, but, you know, I'm on campus once a week because I'm at the University of Hartford, so that's, I take that seriously. So I just wanted to give you that heads up, that, you know, whatever it is that you did for those two gentlemen, that's the reason that I'm going to be voting yes. So I just wanted to give you that heads up.
Any other comments? So I'll just take a moment to say, echo, Mr. Hernandez, I am concerned, and I just want to, I'll share the comment that was given to me about your school not being an urban school. I was hurt by that. And I thought that that was not the spirit of collaboration and inclusion. In fact, you are an urban school. You are in an urban setting. You are in a city, the capital city. And so I just want, going forward, I want everyone to understand that what we need to do is collaborate, and we need to be examples for our children, and we need to be positive role models for our children and accept all of our children, whether they're coming from Berlin, or they're coming from Harvard, or they're coming from Nogatuck, or wherever they are, they're our students, they're our students, and we need to love them and support them. I'm also concerned about some student athletes, and in particular, an athlete who transferred out of your school who feels that they didn't get the supports that they needed with their IEP. IEP, and now they're in New Britain, and are still disenfranchised. And so there are things that we have to do better, we have to do a better job about those things. And so with that said, is there a motion to, oh, give me, yes, Ms. Taylor?
So actually, my board seat is not really my board seat. I really sit here for people who are not at this table and who are not maybe even able to come to these meetings. I have full faith in your potential as a leader to be excellent in the long term, but, you know, we did cite some concerns, really. I think the leader of a magnet school should be really a leader in equity work, period. They should live it, they should breathe it, they should really be thinking about the ways that we can create access for all students coming from every background, whether it be around gender difference, whether it be around socioeconomic difference, racial differences. I think that that should be at the forefront of a magnet school leader's mind, particularly in this area, given the context of the reason why magnet schools were created. So I will be voting with my conscience for people who are not necessarily here at the table, but with an acknowledgement of the faith that individuals have in you and your potential to be excellent in the long run. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second and all in favor of the principal appointment, the University High School of Science and Engineering, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay? How many, wait, let's get it right, you're taking account, how many are nay? I mean, excuse me, how many are affirmative for the appointment? One, two, three, four. Okay, and how many are nay? One, two, three.
You forgot to count yourself, sir.
Oh.
You're the fifth.
All right, so, one, two, three, I normally don't even vote, to be honest with you. All right, so I guess I have to vote. Oh, normally I don't vote because mostly the times are carries. I'll approve it, so I'm a yea. So we'll do it again, all in favor of, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those signify by saying nay?
Nay.
Nay, the motion carries. Congratulations.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for the opportunity, and for those that didn't vote for me, I understand your concerns, and I hope that I can work to earn that vote in other ways, and your trust to work for the kids that are at University High School. My goal is for all of my students to be successful, and I'm open to the idea of growth and what I need to do as a leader and what we need to do as a school. Again, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay, moving on to business agenda, four point four, approval of construction documents, plans for the EDO four-two, Submental MLK School. Madam Superintendent.
DAS, the Office of School Construction Grants and Review, requires that school building committees and boards of ed certify that they have approved the final construction documents for school construction projects prior to OSCG review of the plans, and so once the plans are reviewed and approved, the projects are allowed to go out to bid. So we are here with Hartford School Building Committee, working through, no, no, what?
We have to, we'll finish this and we have to move back, we have to go back. Let's finish this motion and we'll go back. Finish this.
Go ahead, move?
Yeah.
Okay. A cost estimate has been prepared and the scope is within the budget, and we want to note that the project is on an accelerated time schedule in order to be occupied for the fall 2020 academic year. You take. I have a question. Yeah, he's back.
I thought we had an actual presentation like this.
Yeah, but he has to call him to present, right?
Are they going to speak to this?
Are you calling?
Yeah. He's going to call him to speak.
Mr. Jose, could you please?
Sure.
Good evening, Chairman Stallings, Superintendent and board members. So we're here on asking for your approval for Phase Two and Three of the MLK campus. As you know, you had this conversation, okay, you had the first conversation of MLK regarding demolition, and that was Phase One, and now we are here, ready to present Phase Two and Three, which is basically documents that we need approval in order for them to move into the school, the construction office at the state. So with me is J C J Architects, Nathan Total, and Emily Sernacki, and also I have Matthew Pagalo, program manager for Arcadis. So we have a short presentation, just for you to get an idea of where we are with the MLK project. I need to tell you that it's on time, it's where we want it, it's been a pleasure working with J C J Architects, and I have said this many times, and I will repeat myself, as well as working with Arcadis on this project. Fence is up, so if you go by MLK, you will see that we're moving, everything is actually getting on the right timeline. So with that, I will let Nathan walk us through some of the salient points of the project.
Good evening, Madam Secretary, Chairman Stallings, and the board. We have a very brief presentation that'll walk you through some of the changes since we last met, Phase One demolition. We're now through a couple of key pieces. We've been through planning and zoning, we've done all of our interior design work, and we've completed construction documents, and this is a representation of those construction documents in a very pictorial format. As far as the timeline, here we go, as far as the timeline is concerned, this kind of just briefly talks about the quickened pace of this project and where we've been to since completion of construction documents. We've been to the school choice and facilities, Hartford School Building Committee workshops, advisory board approvals, HSBC approvals, and of course today with the Board of Ed, and tomorrow morning with the state of Connecticut at nine o'clock. So one of the key things, key things to address in this presentation, since you've seen it last, is of course the changes from planning and zoning, which we'll talk about just very briefly, and you can kind of see here in the site plan, fundamentally, the site plan remains the same, we've got the existing building to the east and the new addition to the west. One of the key differences here is plantings, we've introduced some additional plantings in the back, or I should say the relocation of some plantings that were in the front over to the back, as well as plantings along Westborne, near the parking. We've modified the shift of the connector, the connector that connects the new addition to the existing school, so that it allows middle school students to access the facilities on the addition, as well as the secondary entry on the north side of the building. Decorative metal fencing is all the way around the building, this was originally a chain-link fence, but now is now a decorative metal fence that connects the entire back corner of the building. And the other small change is the shift of the elevator lobby has gotten a little bit smaller to allow for more visual presence of the existing building along Blue Hills Avenue, along the back.
Sorry, when you're saying changes, you mean changes from?
From planning and zoning.
From planning and zoning.
From planning and zoning.
Thank you, sorry.
Yes, so everything's been incorporated, this is part of that.
So when you are highlighting the planning and zoning changes, can you just please highlight?
Oh, sure, yeah.
Because I have questions.
Yeah, for sure. So trees up in the front, originally, we had a promenade of trees in the front with a long ridge field, those have been relocated into the back. The chain-link fence along the perimeter here is just a change in material from chain-link fence to a metal steel fence, painted picket fence, I should say. And the connector, which is right here, has shifted over slightly to allow more visual presence of the exterior along the backside. So here's some visual images of what the view from the east side, looking at the existing From the South Park and from the secondary entry along the north side, you can see the water table and the continuation of the water table with the introduction of two color tones of brick. We've got a light cool gray brick tone that continues the water table across the facade, and the buff-colored brick which is mimicking the yellow, the yellow brick from the existing building, you can kind of see carrying that across. The other adjustment to the facade on the new addition has been the introduction of the pilasters, the re-proportion of the windows, you can see, so the windows are more in proportion with the existing building's window sizes. And here, we're just sort of pointing out the continuation of that water table that is on the existing school, and the continuation of that color, the lighter colored brick continuation onto the new addition, and the buff-colored brick here, you can see that sort of, that edge color here, and you can see the color tones, the buff-colored brick and the light colored gray tone brick. And then this is a look from the southern end of the building, looking on the backside, and here is the connector, or this is the connector that has shifted a little bit to the north, just to allow more of the existing facade to be exposed along Blue Hills Avenue, the introduction of glass along that connector to allow for more transparency of the courtyard, and the introduction of a green roof on the roof of the new addition, so that classroom spaces up on the third and fourth floors will be looking down onto a green roof. So in the interest of time, I have, we have brought Emily Sernacki to talk a little bit about the development of the interiors, to kind of walk you through that process, and I'll turn it over to Emily.
Thank you very much. We started a process with the principals and some of their select staff, doing some workshops, where we could start the development of the interior, whether that was with color and finishes, as well as introductions of graphics and places that artwork and those types of things could be located within the school. Looking at the floor plan, you can see that the school is divided in half vertically by the two schools, so Martin Luther King Junior's Middle School is represented in the magenta, and Breakthrough North Magnet is represented in the yellow colors. Do you not like those colors?
That's more for T Magnet than it is MLK for this room.
So to quickly just run through, this is the ground floor, this is underneath the existing gymnasium, these are new maker spaces in grade six, and then grades, for Breakthrough North Magnet, we have the pre-Ks and grade K-1 and K-1, those are easily accessible by the secondary entry, where there's also aftercare and Unified Arts, and then the dining facility for the middle school is located through that connector, as well as connected to a multipurpose room, which could also be opened up by an operable partition to create a large event space, a large gathering and collaborative space between the two schools.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I don't see any blue shared community space, so there is none of that on this ground?
Not necessarily on this floor, but this space could be blue shared. This is really a space that could go both, they're divided for now because the dining is technically part of the program for the middle school, and the multipurpose will be the gym space for the Breakthrough North. However, after hours, this space could be used by community. Some of the images that we'd love to show, it's development of these spaces, so the dining facility, this is looking from that multipurpose room into the dining space, we've introduced area for graphics to represent Dr. King, as well, there you can see the stairs from the second-floor connector that leads you down into that space, so you have two connecting spaces, entryways into the dining, as well as all of the glass that looks out into that middle school courtyard, which will allow for outdoor dining as well as outdoor classroom space. And then to the right would be the servary that serves the kitchen, or the kitchen that serves the dining area.
I have a quick question for that particular area.
Yeah.
Is this how it's already set up inside, or is this a redesign of?
This is the, part of the new addition, so this is a brand-new space, not in the original historic building.
Yeah, is it going to be that color? Is this what it's going to look like?
Yeah.
Because what I'm thinking this looks like is not a good thing, and I prefer not to necessarily, yeah, it looks, yeah, it looks just like a prison, like that view right now, it looks like the area where they play cards and they do, like that's the first image that I saw when I-
The chow hall.
Huh?
The chow hall is what it looks like.
Yeah, like, I'm sorry, but that's what it looks like. So it maybe needs some color or something else? I hope that this is not like-
Some of the, a lot of the color can be introduced and defined with the furniture. The furniture has not been selected yet, this is just representation of some of the furniture that's used. With some of the color, and some of it is the graphics, just with the light, it's a little hard to see. There is a number of color in the floor, it just is not necessarily represented, a number of different neutrals that are used as far as the floor pattern. We are keeping a little more on the sophisticated level, but there is color introduced throughout the rest of the school as well.
It also doesn't look like that's the courtyard in front of, so I think that'll change, it'll change the-
Yes, this area is the courtyard.
Yeah, that's what I thought of.
That's all outdoor dining and outdoor classroom space.
Yeah, so, but now that I'm looking at it, and I'm purposely remembering that that's the courtyard, I could see it looking different versus whether it's wall or just-
Right, it won't, it won't, yeah, it won't be wall. We are going to, you know, look at a number of different furniture options, we're looking at high-top tables, as well as, you know, regular movable tables, so that'll be part of the next phase, which is Phase Four, and that is a great opportunity to introduce color into like the seating, into the tabletops. Right now, it is neutral because it hasn't been selected yet.
I guess it's the format that I'm just looking at, and maybe, it's just like I'm looking right at it, it's like the stair part, it's like that's where the guards will be, it's just for me, like the first thing I saw, and I'm sorry to be so blunt, I'm just, I'm just, I don't want to perpetuate a cycle like that we have, so I'm just, like just expressing my concerns of how it looks, maybe, maybe we just use a different image, and it's probably will look so like totally different, but that's just the first perspective, and for me to say that and have several different people say the same thing without me telling them what I was going to say, I just happened to speak it, I do apologize, but, actually, I don't apologize, that's what I, what I see.
And you shouldn't, I mean, this is basically perception, and perception is very important, not only for us, for you board members, for our community too. I mean, the minute the community takes a look at a pictorial image, they're also going to think, okay, this is what I think about it. So there's a couple of things that will happen as well, I mean, we're also looking for feedback, there are- I mean, we're also looking for feedback. There are, as Emily mentioned, the images. We're looking at some coloring. And what has happened in this project so far has been a combination of feedback from community, from teachers, from students. So, you know, they had the opportunity to actually get involved and select some of the images that are going to be in the school, some of the quotes that were going to be placed in there, some of the coloring. I mean, they spent almost an entire day with educators. Both principals were part of this entire workshop in which educators had the opportunity to go and do selection of materials, textures, coloring for the classrooms. So I think that if you take a look from a different angle, it's going to look totally different, right? So I think that that's good for us to know because, I mean, maybe we should then present it in all the different angles, not necessarily this one particular angle. But we will keep that in mind as we move forward with the project because it is extremely important.
Can I add, just like say when I, sometimes when you go into like the old Fox Middle, right, and what they, you go into the achievement first space, right, what they did with color, I just think it just looks plain and that's probably part of the perception of why we instantly thought of prison. But I just think it should be a vibrant place and gray walls does not scream like an exciting place. But to the previous slide, and you don't have to go back there, the MLK space, most of, half of that was the basement?
That's just the ground floor. We're going to go, there's four floors and we're going to go floor by floor. So we showed the ground floor and we're going to show, we're showing just imagery of some of those spaces on that floor. Then we'll go to the first floor, images, second floor images. So there's still a number of floors to look at.
And let me say, I mean, I do need to say this. Even though there is color indicating the schools, both principals have multiple meetings in which they decided that they will be utilizing basically the different sides of the school. Like the multipurpose room that is allocated within the elementary portion, we know that the middle school students will be able to use it and is equipped for them to use it. So even though it has one specific color, it doesn't mean that it's only for that one particular area. Also on the area, and Emily will walk us through, there are other classrooms that actually are for middle school students on the Breakthrough side. So you will see that on each individual floor.
I think, just out of concern, I mean, I know there's a concern with middle school kids mixing with the younger kids, but just in terms of that, the gym and that common area, we're talking about middle school sports. And so we're talking about practicing and we're talking about sort of building robust athletic activities. And so I guess that would be my concern. How do you make sure that they're not interacting with the little ones but still being able to be the quirky, awkward, preteen, pubescent kids that they are? But, you know, I'm sure you'll deal with it, but I'm sorry.
And, Mr. Chairman, that's one of the reasons that the entire gym is truly dedicated for the middle school students. But that doesn't stop both principals to have conversations around maybe sixth graders in Breakthrough North who have experienced, you know, what middle school students are experiencing. They should, we should. I mean, we should all be pushing for with those type of interactions. And that's what we're talking about. But they do have the dedicated space to be a middle school student.
I'm just worried about the middle school meltdown.
Absolutely.
And that was part of the reason the multipurpose space became the gym area for Breakthrough North. Okay, there we go. And just, these images do look a little dull on the screen just because of the lighting. But this is an image of the multipurpose space which ties into that dining space with the operable wall. We have the same acoustic panels along the wall. We are introducing more color here being the elementary primary ages and as well as carrying that same ceiling through the same ceiling design. And here we have a climbing wall. We have two basketball hoops with just small keys. And then this, we have glass that leads out into the courtyard where there is outdoor play dedicated just to Breakthrough North Elementary students with direct access.
So I guess that's what I was discussing. That gym format is not conducive for sports.
This is for Breakthrough North. So this is the...
Oh, so they get two gyms?
Yes. That's the multipurpose room.
All right, good. I like it. I like the climbing one.
We have another image of the gym coming up. Stay tuned. With, now moving up to the first floor, you'll see more of the blue as we do have more of the shared spaces on this main level. We do have the new, the main entry at that initial entry where you can go to the main office to the middle school or on the right to Breakthrough North. This is the renovated gym that is existing that will be dedicated to middle school. There's also our large workroom community spaces, large conference rooms with parent rooms right at that main entry, nurse and dental clinic. And then ECAT program as well as I-GO are located on this floor so that they have direct access right from the main offices. And then the auditorium along with the band space behind stage is all part of that shared space between the schools as well as the community. And then connected to that will be music rooms dedicated to either middle school and to the elementary school. This is an image of the auditorium. We are bringing it back to its original glory, taking out some of the ceiling, the covering up of the windows that had occurred over a number of years ago, as well as opening up the mezzanine. So new seating, new flooring, new curtains and repainting of all of the historic columns and capitals. It'll feel like it was back when it was originally built.
So we can hold Board of Ed meetings in there?
Yes.
Absolutely.
And not freeze.
And there will be new technology with a projection screen. So this will be a, you know, next-generation auditorium. Here is the gymnasium. So opening up those windows again into the original, the original way that gym was laid out as well as opening up the second floor mezzanine for seating. So spectators will be able to view basketball games, volleyball games, any other types of sports that will be occurring in the gym. There will be a new wood floor installed as well as new basketball hoops, all motorized, new scoreboard. And you can't read here, but part of one of the graphics that we are introducing throughout the school, there will be acoustical wall panels that will have quotes. So they will be famous quotes selected by famous people, whether they're sports-related, educational-related. Those will be to be determined, but way to introduce inspirational images in the space.
So get your quotes together, y'all.
Should we, I don't know if we should wait for you to go through it all or... I just think it's important to point out that this court is not the regulation, full regulation basketball court. I just think, I want to, I know we talked about this in our Facilities and Choice Committee and they went through a lot of explanation as to how it's just, there's no way to do it. But I think it would be helpful for the whole board to know that and understand why.
Sure. So, sorry, so this is a middle school regulation-sized court. In order to make it a high school regulation-sized court, we need another 10 feet in length. We don't have, we have the width, we just don't have the length. The issue with the length, of course, is the load-bearing walls on the ends that support the galleries above. And in order to, in order to get that 10 feet, we'd have to remove all of that work. And there's two slash four conditions that would go along with that. Number one, there is the historic component. This is a historic interior of the gym as well as the auditorium. Those are two pieces of the puzzle. The second one is the state of Connecticut's reimbursement for middle school gym. So the cost of going from a middle school regulation-sized gym to a high school-sized gym, they would not fund that reimbursement. And then the two other conditions, the two other conditions is, of course, the structural component of that, kind of tearing down those walls and kind of rebuilding that whole thing all over again. And then, of course, the added complexity is the timeline, the schedule of the project, which, the first two points being the strong points, the latter two points being the minimum points.
So it's a good thing that we're programming this as a middle school?
Yes.
Another component we wanted to show on the first floor, main lobby, is us reintroducing again some of those historical elements. So opening up the ceiling to the original coffers which will be repaired and reinstalled to its original glory. There will be glass doors that are locked. As you go into the building, you have to meet with security and then go to either side, either main office. But as you are entering, you come through these doors and you'll be greeted by additional glass doors into that conference room. We are also planning to restore all of the terrazzo floors that are existing, just as they did at MD Fox. We've had it looked at and it's in good shape considering it's almost 100 years old. So we are looking forward to restoring that on the first, second and third floors and the corridors.
Question?
Sure.
So we're no longer going to have the brass coming up?
Those are still existing.
I was about to say, you about to crush my...
No, no.
I was about to say.
That's not part of this image. That's beyond these glass doors in the vestibule. But all of that will remain and be repaired and cleaned.
We need to get different angles of this.
This is past the vestibule into the lobby area.
Brass remains.
Brass remains, yes. This is a view in the large conference community space which looks out into the lobby. We are reinstalling some of these stained glass windows that are currently in our offices now, installing them here, looking into the parent rooms as well as looking into each of the main offices.
So you're keeping all that wood grain and all the stuff in the office?
We are, yes, yes.
So how do you make it lighter?
How do you make it? Well, opening up the ceilings and painting, everything will be very light. So...
Taller, higher.
Yes. This is an image in the vocal room and one of the music rooms to show, you know, different ceilings and acoustical treatments that we are installing there. We're going to quickly go through, the second floor is primarily the spectator seating in grade seven with Breakthrough North having grades two and three and the mezzanine access with the center being the media center which will be a shared media center. However, as you enter, you are greeted at the circulation with reading spaces dedicated to each side, to each school. These are just a couple images of classrooms. So this is an elementary classroom showing some of the ways that we are using color in the floor as well as each classroom on each floor will have a different access, entry color at the soffit as a way of wayfinding as you come down the corridor into the classrooms. These are just some interior finishes just to show how we are bringing a number of colors into the school. This was worked out with the principals as well as the teachers. Middle school has a similar layout with different colors in the floor, just a little bit upscale and sophisticated with some of those colors, but same idea with the colored soffit at the entries. Each floor will have a different color.
I have curiosity. Did each school, do they have school colors? I know MLK has green and white, but what is the Breakthrough Two?
They do. So we have our Dr. Crawford. She's here. And of course, you know, when we're doing the selection of the colors, gold for MLK was one of the main colors that needed to be selected. And it will be incorporated into every single one of the classrooms, main entrance and throughout the entire building.
Yes.
So this is thank you to our principal that was adamant that the colors need to represent the school color.
We very much worked together on bringing those colors in.
What about the, what is that in front of the school when you come in the image? The images of that, what story is that around the...
Aesop's Fables.
Yeah, is that going to be reflected inside the school?
We're restoring the exterior portions and anything that's on the interior, so in the auditorium. So there's little, there's little elements in the auditorium. Yeah, we're restoring all those.
Yes.
So, yeah.
Cool.
It will look very nice.
And here are the images that you can see where we've introduced the gold, the green. It looks a little gray here, but it is a more vibrant green and blue. So incorporating those school colors. Images in the media center, this is the middle school side with the stained glass windows looking out towards Keene Park, a number of different furniture options that we will be exploring in the next phase, but showing some different layouts and movable shelving, technology, writable walls. This was looking at the elementary school side. So again, taking those primary colors and making it a little more playful for the younger kids. And lastly, with third floor, we have grade eight for the middle school side with grades four and five to the north with a connecting, what we're calling debate professional development. This is a technology classroom. Will be like distance learning, multi-use space. And we have an image there showing how the furniture is easily movable, technology and Dr. Crawford's gold wall as an accent in that space, along with additional imagery to be determined. And that's our presentation.
I have a question.
No, no, Madam Taylor.
So that green space, is that space that can be utilized, the rooftop space?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, on the exterior?
Yes.
On the exterior, it is, it is, there, it's a green roof. It's not going to be like a learning, it's not going to be a learning classroom kind of thing. And it's not anything that you would want to use either. It's merely for, planning and zoning had some concerns about the upper floors looking out over the roof and just seeing just a roof. They wanted to see a little bit more of a playful space. So that's what those are for. So, here, I can go back to the previous image.
I've seen spaces like that used for like yoga and like, I'm like, since we're going all the way, you know?
Right, right, right. Gardens.
So, yeah, so here.
That's what I'm thinking too.
Right up here, right? These, this is merely for visual on the exterior for the classrooms. We do have on property, we have gardens for learning environments that...
But it doesn't, so green as in grass or green as in some green type of aluminum?
Green, no, plantings. Green plantings. They're planting trays. So they're trays that sit on the roof like a plant, planting tray would. They're ballast, it's a ballast system. So they're anchored to the roof, but they're just there for visual appearance and not necessarily a learning environment like a classroom space, like an exterior classroom space.
And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to like really just express our gratitude. Like, this was like a historic preservation, like slash renovation, slash build, slash like specific design around like functionality. So I'm really excited for this and I really think that you all did a fantastic job. And like, kudos to you, Jose, for really keeping abreast of this whole process. Super excited and I think our community really deserves it.
So going back to that space, if you, if we just, if it was just a roof, what would that, does that, does that cost more? Does that cost less?
Planning and zoning, I mean, that's one of the main concerns that when you, once you look from a third floor overseeing basically that section of the building, it was pretty plain. So both students and visitors, especially coming from the media center or the professional development room which is in that area, the view wasn't as attractive. So planning and zoning had a recommendation and they said, you know, could you do something with entire roof? And the idea came out to be this green area. But what you're saying is that if it's only roof, it could be just basically a plain...
It's a roof.
It's a roof. It's a plain, yeah. It's a roof, it's plain, yeah. It's just, it's attractive right now.
But how, what, how does that connect the project from a cost, cost-effective issue? How's it impact the project? Is it taking anything away from the project?
No, it does not take any, no, in terms of the finances?
Does it have to be maintained?
Cause I don't see...
Does it have to be maintained?
Right, that's, that's kind of what I...
Like, is it real?
Grass.
It is, they're, they're real grasses, they're sort of made, they're, they're, they're sort of, they're native grasses that don't need much maintenance, but will need very small amounts of maintenance. They, they, there may be, there may be on occasion where, you know, just like any, any pot at home, a plant dies, they'd have to be replaced. But they, they just take up the daily soaking of rain that you get, and they, they can go through long periods of dry, dry spells. They're very resilient, it's like a resilient grass. It's a, just a, it's a grass. It's a way to get a green space out of an otherwise ordinary roof.
Is there any environmental impact, like quantifiable from doing this? It's purely for aesthetic?
Correct.
In the maintenance, custodian will be responsible.
Can we, can we, I thi, I think it actually would be helpful to actually know, I mean, even if you're saying it's not taking away from something else, a project, like what it actually costs, and then what the, like, projected, like, maintenance costs are? I mean, you know, just, we've been given the budget of, I mean, cause maintenance is something that the district, you know, obviously the funds for these projects are reimbursed by the state in large part, but the, the maintenance cost is something that, you know, every year we have to put that out of our budget.
And how big is the access to that space? Cause someone's gonna have to get up there and do it.
Yeah, so there's a door, I'm sorry. Yeah, there's, all the way in back here is a new elevator shaft, a new elevator hoistway, and it has a door out to the roof component, so you can get up the elevator and then out that door to the roof without too much trouble.
Well, I just wanna, I just wanna add that, so I actually appreciate that change, because I remember, you know, growing, going to school in the inner city in Chicago, growing up my, I could see the roof of, of part of my building, school building, and what I saw was shoes, bottles, you know, spo, balls that people threw up there and could never recover. And so that's what I grew up seeing. I saw, I grew up seeing a mess. I grew up seeing garbage. I grew up seeing, so I actually appreciate, it's, it's the little things, I think, too, right? To see, you know, for our students to see a beautiful green space and, and to know that as a board and even as a city that we care about green space and that green space should be preserved and whatnot, right? I do, I do wish it was a little bit more usable, a little bit more interactive. Like, I think it'd be really cool to do, to have it as a space for folks to do yoga after school, or, you know, maybe even actually have it be space where kids can actually go out and plant in the planters, right? I think that would have been cool, but I appreciate this over what it would have been anyway, so, just wanted, yeah.
I, I need to go back to the, the gym with the climbing wall.
Sure.
Cause a, a concern keeps going through my head. I have a, a basketball hoop in my backyard that's sitting on a post, and my oldest son ran into the post and ripped his leg open and required inside and outer stitches, and will have a scar the rest of his life. And, and I see the climbing wall there, and, and in my mind, I see kids running into it when they're going for the hoop.
So, we're showing this with the hoops down and then the, the climbing wall. There's actually a wall padding, similar to what you see on the walls. There's a wall pad that's attached to the bottom, and when you're using the climbing wall, the wall pad falls down on the floor, so it's a protective. And then when the, when you're not using the climbing wall, it actually goes up and is Velcro to, to protect the climbing wall. So this will be covered whenever kids are using the basketball hoops with a protective pad. That's a good point.
We will avoid this ever happening.
Right, we don't...
One other question, and you, is not in your presentation. Are, is there gonna be a space that would acknowledge the actual building's history? The fact that it was a, it used to be a high school, it used to be Weaver, and then sort of, kind of like a museum for the students to learn about the building?
So, right, yes. So what we've done throughout the building, and I'll try to just go back to one of the plans, just as an, actually, I'll go to the first floor. What we've done on each of the floors is locate a number of display cases throughout the school, distributed between both middle school and the elementary school. They're at the lobbies, they're in between by art rooms, by gym areas, auditorium. And then we've also introduced areas for the graphic work. So in, as you saw in the dining space, there's a wall where there'll be graphics that will, you know, the image is to be determined, but represent Dr. Martin Luther King, or represent pieces of history of the school. There's a number of those areas, such as there. There's also, at this main entry, this wall here will be a graphic image, as well as what we, we've been calling Inspiration Way, this corridor, and then a number of other areas, like the inspirational quotes. So we tried to distribute that throughout the entire school, rather than put it into one space.
Any other question? Concern, well, thank you so much. And so we're gonna get to the recommended action, which is a motion that the Harvard Board of Education approves. The final phase two and three documents authorization authorizes the architect to submit documents to construction, for the construction phase of the work. For the above referenced school, the Office of Schools' Construction Grants to review and approve. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a motion seconded? Been moved and seconded, all in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you so much, Jose.
Thank you.
Four point five, approval of school construction project is complete and submitted to the, of SCG dash ten zero four nine F, West Middle School. There's a motion for the board to accept the renovations, extensions, and alterations work at West Middle. State project number zero six four dash zero three zero three R nine V slash EA as complete. Furthermore, the Board of Education approves the request for final payment and submission of the SCG dash ten zero four nine F form to the Office of School Construction Grant as review, aim review for audit to commence. Commerce, excuse me. Is there a motion? I'm setting up the motion first. Is there a motion to approve this, this item? So moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, Madam Superintendent?
Any questions for Dr. Colon Rivas?
Do you want me to explain very quickly what this is?
Yes, overview?
So, construction, yes, construction completed at West Middle. Part of the construction is to bring every single element that was added to that construction, go through the school building committee, all different committees. School building committee have reviewed every single item, and they have, they all agreed that it has been completed to satisfaction. So once we had that approval from the school building committee, now it comes to the board for the final approval in order for the state then to reimburse the money. That's what you're approving. So you're approving completion of the one particular construction at West Middle.
Thank you. Any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor of passing this motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carrying, ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is item four point six, contract amendment, the Board of Regents for Higher Education on behalf of Manchester Community College. The motion before us is the Harvard Board of Education approves and accepts the management agreement as negotiated by the superintendent and Manchester Community College. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is a year extension, just for this school year. The college and the Board of Regents has not engaged in conversations as to whether or not to do another year extension or release an RFP for the management of Great Path Academy. And so, we are the managing agent, and so this contract extends through the end of the year to continue to do so. As you know, there is, I believe there's an interim president at Manchester Community College. And as you know, we have changes happening at the state level. And so, there will be more information to come as the year progresses, but this is for this current year.
Are there any questions or comments? If not, all in favor of approving, oh, excuse me, is there a motion? Definitely the motion? No, I didn't do the motion. Is there a motion to approve this recommended item of man, the management agreement by the superintendent? It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving this motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Item number four point five, excuse me, four point seven, expeditionary learning. The motion before the board authorizes superintendent to execute a contract with expeditionary learning for a term delineated in the contract at the amount not to exceed one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty, uh, one hundred and twelve thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars, ending June 30th, 2019. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, this is a contract for covering the three schools, as we seek to phase the work out. I believe, I thought we had the principal of McDonough here, but she's probably, she's gone. Okay, so I know that Dr. Negron is here, in case we have any questions for her. Do know that we are, again, in the process of phasing out this work. The schools are specifically interested in becoming certified sites, which will allow them to become laboratories for other schools, not just throughout Connecticut, but outside of Connecticut, to come and learn from them. We are having conversations, like I said, in terms of how is it that we're going to leverage the capacity that we have already built as having this contract for several years now.
Is there any questions? Any questions or comments? Hearing none. The Board of Education authorized superintendent to execute this contract, is there a motion to execute the expeditionary learning contract? It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving this action, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carrying. Madam Taylor, excuse me, Ms. Taylor, would you like to speak to the first reading?
Sure, why not? So we're bringing up the physical restraint and seclusion policy for a first read. There is a statutory requirement for the physical restraint and seclusion policy that per state statute needs to be implemented by January 1st, 2019, to remain in compliance. The committee moved for a first read at this meeting, and then to have a second reading and adoption on January 15th for statutory changes to the policy. The policy that's here in your packet is pretty brief. I would also advise individuals to read between this first reading and the second reading, the, the additional regulations that can be found online or in your board docs. And that's really, we're updating per statutory requirement, we want to be in compliance. We're trying to bring all of our policies, like, up to code, up to par, so I would be very grateful if people were willing to approve this for a first read this evening, with an understanding that we'll come back for a second read in a month.
Ms. Taylor, I have a question. Were the, the regulations, were, there any changes to the regulations with the, like, with the changes to the policy, if you remember?
Not to my knowledge, there weren't changes to regulations. There may be some wording changes, though, because we did change some of the language within the policy, but Julie would be happy to speak to that.
Hi. So we haven't made changes to the regulations yet. This is a change to the policy. The statute that went into effect this summer had some requirements for what needed to be in the school world's policy. The regulations will be changed based on changes in definitions in, that the statute lays out, and some procedural requirements. So we'll, we will be revising our regulations, but we haven't done it yet. So we're doing it in concert with this process, but most importantly, given the statutory deadline, we're looking to revise the policy.
Yeah, no, I understand the deadline. I guess, I'm just asking, cause, um, and I apologize, cause I missed the policy committee meeting, and this all might have been answered there. But, no, I just, because, um, I, I remember these regulations are really robust, so that's why I just, you know, the meat is kind of in, in the regulations, and this is a really important policy, and, you know, obviously relates to a lot of our priorities around the restorative justice and, and those, you know, elements of the direction we're trying to go in. So I, that's why I ask, and then will we have that opportunity to, I know the board doesn't approve regulations?
Exactly, but you'll have the opportunity to review all of that. We've already, what Karen was referring to, we have model regulations that we're gonna do, we're taking the procedures, definitions, the meat of that policy as it existed, which really more properly lies in regulation, and we're doing a red line of that against the model regulations. So you'll have an opportunity to review that, see all of those changes. We also, you know, I think we want, because as you said, the meat of it lies in the regulations, I want to keep that in the regulations so that we have the ability to adapt to changes in the statute, without having to go through the lengthy process of the first and second read. So that was another reason for taking something that had been previously combined and separating it out, so that we can really consider the changes to the regulations.
Wow. You guys chose the hard way, huh?
You chose the good way, the best way.
Yeah, yeah. You guys...
The right way, right.
There's, because it's a first reading, there's no vote that's required, right? Okay.
Correct.
Correct. Well, thank you so much for that, and I look forward to that work, cause that's a lot of hard work. All right, consent agenda, is there a motion to take five point two, five point three, and five point four up as one item?
So moved.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor of taking a consent agenda as one item, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
It's been, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Still moved.
It's been moved, is there a second? It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of adjournment, this being pleased, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed?
No, I'm just kidding.
We're standing adjourned.